I'd like to now call the June 3 meeting of the Talbot County Planning Commission to Order. Oh, we got it.
Make sure your microphones are turned on and make sure you speak very closely.
Do you want to go on all the time?
I'm sure they don't want you ready to speak, but just make sure it's very close to you.
Okay, again, I'd like to call the June 3 meeting of the Talbot County Planning Commission to Order. Our first order of business today is old business, the applicant town of Trap, the Trap East Holdings Business Trust. The request is for consideration of Amendment Number One for consistency with the Talbot County Comprehensive Plan. So before we start, before the county council may adopt the proposed amendment, the Planning Commission must certify that the amendment is consistent with the plan. And we do that by reviewing seven charges. So what I'd like to do is to review each of those seven items, and we'll have a discussion about them, and then we'll circle back at the end with your motion. So if everyone wants to take a minute to gather that paperwork that they may need.
Chip, this is Bill.
Yes.
I'm all for this seven inconsistencies, but I also want to remind you, in my opinion, that there are other issues in terms of consistency with a comprehensive plan that don't quite fit into these seven things, so I'll mention them later.
Yeah, so Bill, I think what we should do is go through the seven items, and then at the end of that, we can recap or add to it with some comments, and then we can go from there. I have some things.
I'm happy with it.
Yep, good, good.
I'm happy with that, that's good.
Okay, so since you're ready to go, Bill, the first item is on policy. Would you like to add anything on the discussion on policy?
I'm trying to take my comments into those categories. I guess I don't have anything specific to a policy, I'm just trying to think. Well, in terms of review, I guess the policy here, what does the county have for review with this proposed amendment? It seems that it has reviewed now, and it has reviewed as proposed at Phase Two or Phase Two. And I personally think that's exactly what the modest stages protect the county, that's all I'm saying there.
Okay, Michael?
I don't have any comments on that at this time.
Lisa?
Okay, in addition to the policies reflecting Chapters Two, Four, and Six in materials that we were given for review, can everybody hear me okay? I have some specific things that I looked at in terms of inconsistencies with the policies. The Development and Growth Planning Sector Policy 2.9 from the Talbot County Comprehensive Plan, quote, "County development regulations for designated growth areas should support the orderly expansion of the towns by discouraging premature development in these areas." I'd like to bring us all back to Bill Anderson, Public County Works Commission's Advisory Board, excuse me, May 18 memo that talks about the growth of the development and how it could take many, many years, and by providing immediate priority status, we're premature in allowing development in these areas, hence why I see Policy 2.9 as inconsistent. Sensitive Areas Planning Policy 2.28, quote, "Within sensitive areas, agricultural and forest cover should remain the dominant land issues." My comment there is the proposed use of the Northeast quadrant as a sprayer should feel is not consistent with this policy. Sensitive Areas Planning Policy 2.32, quote, "Sensitive environmental areas shall be protected to the greatest extent possible. The use of trade-offs will incent that increase overall density or in near-sensitive areas are discouraged." I mentioned last meeting that the Trap Comprehensive Plan does not recognize the sensitive area in their town limits. I've not yet heard any response to that. Natural Resource Policy 6.24, quote, "The county recognizes the importance of stream corridors as water quality buffers and wildlife habitat encourages our protection and undisturbed state. The county should continue to enforce cotta requirements for all tributary and intermittent streams in the county." And lastly, the Natural Resource Policy 6.27, "New development shall be restricted in sensitive areas and the protection enhancement of environmental resources should be ensured." Again, reference my comment at our last meeting. If you don't recognize a sensitive area, how can you ensure that environmental resources are preserved? I could go on, but I think that those five or six points are good points.
Thank you, thank you. Commissioner Spees?
Yeah, my comments are just, I believe we're heading down a slippery slope, in my opinion. Those are all good points, and I have a lot of issues with this project if this was at the major site plan stage, but we're not there. I mean, what we're ruling on is this ready to move on to water and sewer, to S1, W1 standards? And if we're gonna, on every project, go through each stage of it like it's the major site plan or the early-stage site plan, then I already feel like we have enough meetings, I already feel like I'm in here enough. So doing this at every stage makes me extremely nervous. So, like I said, I have some of the same concerns that my colleagues do on this project, and I wish they were addressed at the appropriate time. But dealing with these at this stage, in my terms, unless I can be convinced, is not the right time. I'm voting on whether moving this property that's already been approved and a previous board of commissioners believe that it met that standard and the county passed way before my time on the board. So my charge is to say, is it in line with the comprehensive plan for this property now to move to S1, W1? And with my concerns, the same concerns that Commissioner Gezzi brought up, I have those same concerns, but I don't, it's hard for me to rule that this is the time to find that that's compliant with the comprehensive plan for moving it to S1, W1.
Thank you. So in my opinion...
I'm happy to yield, the audio's breaking up.
Okay, maybe we'll have to talk directly into the mic, Bill says the audio's breaking up. Okay, so when I look at Item Number One, Policy, and I'm gonna start with the 1973 Comprehensive Plan for Talbot County, and I quote, "To encourage new development to locate in and around existing population centers." If we move to the 1990 Comprehensive Plan, that was when the first, what I would consider to be a major downzoning, so we had a density of one dwelling per two acres, obviously depending on per approvals. It was quite controversial at the time, but the county went to a density of one per 20 plus three in the rural areas, and the discussion centered around, obviously that was taking a lot of development rights away from the landowners of the county. So the discussion at that tone line was where will growth occur? And it came back to growth should occur in the population areas where there was sufficient public utilities. So as the discussion centered about where would Talbot County grow, the discussion at that time was Y Mills or Trap. So right, wrong, or indifferent, the Y Mills discussion centered around traffic, its location, and proximity to the Bay Bridge. And quite honestly, the fear was that a large-scale growth in the Y Mills area would create a more rapid pace of growth with commuters. And I think at the time, they said people were willing to travel maybe up to an hour. So we looked at the Trap area as an area for future growth. So again, in 2005, the comp plan was looked at again, it was looked at in 1997, and then again in 2005. And again, obviously, the Trap item was discussed at length, and again, it was reaffirmed that that growth should occur in and around existing population areas. So I'll stop there, there's some things I'll add as we go through these. But, so our next item on our list is the timing of the implementation of the plan. So Bill, do you have any comments on the timing?
The plan is a little uncertain about what it refers to, but the timing that's before my consideration is the sewer timing, and that is still a concern. And I think that the timing for the implementation of the sewer is too uncertain in this case, it's too review period. So I want to go back quickly to the policy. Say that I agree with Chip's characterization and the reason for originally approving this project, that we were all under the, what was called then, smart growth idea, and the idea of who grows in and around established house. I think that in retrospect, this smart growth is a bit of a stress because of the deal with the project, more than a bit of a stress, and that it does reach out beyond around the town, officially in the town, but when you define a town, that's not especially where it is. It's a substantial stretch in the area. Anyway, I'll hold it up there.
Mr. Stranahan?
And that it does reach out beyond the town, that's my opinion.
Sorry, I had to leave them, somebody's watching YouTube.
There's a delay, we want to tell someone about to me, they need a week or two. It's like I'm telling people that I'm calling every week.
For those calling in, if you could please mute your phone, there's a very slight delay, so we're getting that feedback back through in the room. Commissioner Stranahan, would you like to?
Yes, my comments on this, particularly listening to the comments of the other commissioners, I too have concerns on many levels with some of the specifics of it. As Commissioner Spees pointed out, most of this unfortunately is, I believe, beyond our purview for today. That if we were here in the major site plan situation today, I would have different questions than what I will have today. This is unfortunately, so much of the approval has happened before we've gotten to this point that, again, the timing at this stage of the process, I don't believe we have a problem with.
Commissioner Gezzi?
A couple of points in response to Mr. Stranahan. I don't object to the development and to Commissioner, Chairman, Council. I certainly don't object to the development in this area. It is a, this isn't just a development, this is a development of an entirely new trap, a town of trap that exceeds its area current population by five to six times when ultimately built out. This is a changing of the face of Trap, which would be a very big chunk of Talbot County. In terms of the approvals already accomplished, there were some materials published, we all had access to them in our packets on Friday, we had to get our packets for review on Friday, and then there was, there were some articles in some of the local publications questioning whether or not the approvals were obtained appropriately. I had sought for materials to understand what that meant, because I don't certainly want to approve something assuming that it had been approved appropriately. I'd like to make sure that it was approved appropriately. I had requested some materials on Monday morning. Where, with this COVID, this is just crazy for everybody, it's just so hard to respond in a timely way. It's hard for us to all be together in the same room today. It just shows, you know, the difficulty of this time, and I'm very sensitive to that. But this is changing the face of our county, this development. There's just, there's a lot of things going on, and I'd like to be pointed because I don't want to draw this out. But I do, I am concerned about the approvals that have been gotten in when we say approvals were achieved. I'd like perhaps staff to comment on that if they could. I have, I was able to get some materials that I'd like to make public, and I'd like to hand over to our staff, that I'd like to make available to the rest of the Planning Commission. I have not had time to review these 200-plus pages of materials. I don't know whether or not they're going to have an impact on the ultimate decision. There seems to be, there could be some issues arising from these documents, and I ask, at an appropriate time, that we perhaps also relay this discussion for another month. I'm sorry to postpone that, but there have just been so many difficulties right now. I think it's important that we do that. So one, I question whether or not we have, there is approval, and I'd like somebody to help answer that. If, you know, NDEs will want approving this versus the county council. I also understand that the county council turned this down in 2005, five to zero. Jennifer, did you need something?
I want to get your name out, so you can...
Oh, okay. They're not to be handed out, they need to be copied. Can I give them to you at the end, because I'm really a little looking at them anyway? But I'll keep them here for the refer, if I need to refer to them, because I only have the one copy. Okay, so back to the question, Mr. Council's question. Timing, there was a public concern letter presented by Public Council, Letter of May 19. I think that his explanation, talking about the timing of the implementation, that the plan is too long to approve in one phase, referring back to the Public Works Advisory Board, I'm sorry, the Public Works Advisory Board's May 18 letter, that also points to timing. I think it's inconsistent for us to be approving a development that would take place over many, many years, giving priority, immediate priority status to a development that is going to take many, many years. I'd be curious as to the marketing plans and what they show, maybe I'm totally wrong. Maybe the marketing plans show you can build out these 2,500 homes in less than three years. Given today's timing, that's a bit of a stretch. So I do think that we need to understand as the development evolves, that this be phased. I think that the recommendation two in the Public Works Advisory Board letter is a fine recommendation to go by. I don't understand why this conversation happened back in 2002 with the same issues, and it was suggested back then that 250 homes be developed. So all that said, those are my comments.
Commissioner Spees?
Nothing at this time.
Yeah, so in regard to timing, and I'll refer back to the introduction in our current Comprehensive Plan. And it says, "A comprehensive plan provides policy guidance for public officials and citizens who will shape the county's growth and development over the next 20 years." So that's exactly how I see this development. I don't see this as a short-term project. I agree with Commissioner Gezzi, it will change the face of the county. And we have the opportunity now, in my opinion, in the timing, to lay this out. Do we want to continue to chop away at the rural areas of Talbot County? Or do we want to plan for growth over the next 30 years? I think, again, in the timing, this isn't going to be developed overnight, it's gonna take time. I think that's a good thing. So I think, it's my opinion, that we need to look out many, many years, not 20 or 30, 50. We are creating another municipality in the county. Is this where we want it to occur, is this not where we want it to occur? Now, keep in mind that Trap has annexed this into the town. They have annexed it, it's been done. When we talk about site plans and development in that layout, I think the county has input, but at the end of the day, that's up to the town. It's not, it will, it will not come before this Planning Commission other than maybe some guidance from the town. But it is the purview of the development of that and design, that is the charge of the town, not the Talbot County Planning Commission. So at this time, we'll move to Item Three, the timing of development. Commissioner Boycourt, do you have any concerns on the timing of the development? I want to do it with you.
No.
Okay, well, Bill, are you still with us?
Sorry.
Yeah?
I would thought, yeah, I was doing what you said, I want to endorse what you just said, and that we are looking at only this sewer issue here because this is a town purview in terms of the type of development. And so it is the only chance I see for the county to weigh in here if they're concerned, and I think they should be concerned with regard to the timing of the development. We just talked about, I think we all agree that this is a long-term process. So things change in that long-term process, and I, so I don't think it's a burden, in my opinion, to require more checks on the sewer allocation. And I do agree that the Public Works Advisory Board has a layout of a plan that frankly I can endorse. It doesn't seem to burden some on the part of the developer because of the long-term aspect of this. The, it does provide that kind of spacing, provides the county with a time to weigh in on their ability to adapt to the growth, and to assess the possible environmental impact. So I am not in favor of the two phases as proposed in Amendment 281, but a more, a slightly more dyke approach as suggested by the Public Works Advisory Board.
Thank you. Commissioner Stranahan?
As far as timing of the development is, I agree with the Commissioner, Chairman, Council. This is a, the partial that we are looking at right now is going to be a long-term development. I believe that what we are dealing with at the moment in Phase One as proposed is not the entire 2,500 homes, but a portion of that, that is much smaller. It's still a long-term and area-changing development, but it is not the entire portion. It's smaller bites at the apple would probably make me happier in this. But again, we are not looking at a three-year, five-year, 2,500-home development. We, in my opinion, we're looking at a many-year first phase before this is entirely developed.
Thank you. Commissioner Gezzi?
I'm excited for the development of Trap. I think that there could be so many wonderful things done with Trap. I reflect on another matter we'll be discussing later, very well thought-through master plan for Cordova. There's so much, you know, to be done for our beautiful area and develop this. Development is certainly an expected part of that. Mr. Commissioner Shanahan just mentioned it, it's a reduced chunk, it's actually a two-thirds of the development, is being suggested by Resolution One, Amendment One to Resolution 281. And that, that still is a pretty big chunk. So the timing of the development is, and I've said much in the last question, which also covers this, but I think that the timing of this development is substantial.
Mr. Spees?
I think I'm gonna sound like a broken record today, but I'm just gonna hit on it probably for the second time in 10 that I mentioned it today, but, you know, I'm not charged with writing new policy up here, I'm not charged with making deals to make a project more favorable at this hearing. I would love to see this in a five, six, seven-phase project and agreement. But again, I'm just gonna hit on, one of my charges today is saying, is it in line with our comprehensive plan to move this project to S1, W1? And when I look at that, some of the arguments or some of the things I like to see are things that I don't think really are coming to play today. When this first came, when this first came up to me, when I, since I've been on the Planning Commission, it was first proposed for the whole entire project to go to S1, W1. And I think if they pushed it hard enough or really wanted to do that, and got fed up with the system, they would have the legal groundworks to move the entire property to S1, W1. I think some of the stuff that they've given us since they first came in front of us have been compromises. You know, I know there's more, more than just saying, you know, with the wastewater treatment system, there is some benefit to the developer to move to that enhanced system because of the, they wouldn't need to, and they offset your trades, but I think that's an environmental benefit also. So they're getting something, we're getting something, and I also believe by phasing it, agreeing to do it in two phases, we're getting something. Would I like to see it more? I would, I would like to see it, you know, three or four phases, or maybe more. Does that come into play with me voting on this, if this is should be, is it in compliance with the comprehensive plan to move this bill forward? And vote on, is it in compliance with the comprehensive plan? I believe it is, and I believe my desire to see five phases is something that I can't force upon the applicant or even coming into this conversation.
So when I think about the timing of development, I think about two things. We've talked about the phasing, and I think from the applicant and the town's perspective, again, we have to look at the big picture. We talk about phasing this probably in four or five phases, but my opinion is that is not a long-term logical solution to this. They have agreed to do it in two phases, I think that gives the town the ability to move forward, I think it gives it the... I think it gives the developer the ability to move forward. This has been a designated growth area, either formally or informally, for 30 years. When we talk about timing, again, this is going to take place over many years to come. So, I think the timing is right. Again, it's taking pressure off of our rural and sensitive areas. Uh, and, and a lot of these answers or, or discussion are the same for each of these policies. And that's okay. But I think it, I think we still need to, need to talk about them. And it's okay to be repetitive because they do lapse over. And again, we want to take this seriously. And I think we have. We want to look at it from every aspect. But my opinion is, the timing of the development is, is correct. So, next, we'll move on to item four, the timing of rezoning. Commissioner Boycourt, you have any comments? Bill, I don't know if you have your phone muted or not, but we can't, we can't hear you.
I'm sorry, again.
Yeah. And you had such a good opening line, right?
(laughing) With regard to timing of rezoning, um, my understanding, I need to see correction if I'm wrong, is that at the time of, of, of the annexation process, um, there's a, there's a, uh, the county is, is, um, asked whether they would like to exercise a five-year hold if there's a substantial change in, in use and rezoning, um, proposed by the town. That, that, to me, that time is long gone. That, that, um, the, and, and, uh, in this case, in retrospect especially, would have very little, uh, the county would have very little input even if they exercised the five-year hold. Um, and because, first of all, it's been a long time, but even if the five-year hold were exercised, uh, the, the town and the, and the developer gets to go, to go forth with planning and permits, uh, for, for the change. So, I, 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 I'm a little bit confused by that.
Thank you. Commissioner Stranahan?
I agree with Commissioner Boycourt that, that timing for any input on rezoning is, by us, is probably long past.
Commissioner Gesi?
I have no comment on the timing of the rezoning. But I do just want to take this opportunity to comment. We've been asked, um, to determine whether or not this resolution is consistent with our Talbot County comprehensive plan. And what means do we have to do that but to go back to our comprehensive plan, evaluate the policies, evaluate the resolution, and how they comport? The points I made earlier specifically demonstrated to me inconsistency. I, I guess I wonder why we have no chance for comment from the applicant. But why is it so necessary to not phase this development differently? Why does it have to be done in such a large chunk?
Commissioner Spees?
No comment.
So, when I look at the timing of the rezoning, and I see where the property was annexed into the town of TRAP on May 5th, 2003. So, obviously, that was 17 years ago. So, so, when we talk about the timing of rezoning, I think that, that ship has sailed, so to speak. Next, we'll move on to item five, development patterns. Commissioner Boycourt?
I think all we have in front of us is that sketch map, um, that the applicant gave us a few meetings ago. It's not encouraging to the eye. Uh, I agree, agree with Jay Korman's assessment that it's, um, it looks like a sprawl. But, uh, we don't have any adequate number of information, in my opinion, to know what the development patterns really will be. What we do have is some suggestions of where the, the sewer, um, and water, um, uh, facilities will be, but that's it. Well, I can't really assess that from, from where I stand.
Okay. Commissioner Stranahan?
I don't have any comments at this time beyond what we have been given of the proposed development.
Commissioner Gesi?
I would only hope that the developer is building, um, a development that will allow for growth and that I think we can interpolate that if 2,500 homes are built over a period, which would be everybody's guess at this point, particularly given COVID. Maybe it have a positive impact, I don't know, but it may also have a very negative impact. Um, let's just use some conservative numbers. 2,500 homes, 2.5 persons per home is 6,250 more residents. That's growing our county by 17%. That's a significant jump in population and development patterns. If you look at the, the recent resolution, there's not a commitment, from what I understand, and we'd like more time to review this, but it appears that there's not a commitment to the ENR or BNR. It's, it's the membrane versus the enhanced, um, approaches. And I have some recollection that, um, if there's no commitment to these, to one or the other, um, it's difficult to say whether or not various MDE requirements are going to be tripped. And can the existing system actually carry the load when it's already according to two sources, public sources that have provided comment impacting the quality of the waterways? Again, um, is it so, why is it so necessary to rush into this when we have so many unanswered questions?
Commissioner Spees?
On, on development, development timing or development pattern, um, you know, my statement's just been, you know, whether I'm for or against the overall scope of this project, and not knowing or hearing before today that anything was, they didn't go through the process on the up and up, I can't rule on that. There must have, in my mind, it's in front of me. So, you know, it'll be interesting to see those down the road. But on today, it seems like it went through the, the proper development pattern that we've set as guidelines by the county. Um, it's gone through each of our stages of, uh, site planning, um, annexation by the, by the, one of our, our towns, um, and then coming back in front of us to, to rule on the S1W1. And if it meets, that portion of it meets, um, is in line with our comprehensive plan. So, on, on development pattern, you know, I think it's followed the pattern that we've, we've set as guidelines as a council.
Thank you. When I look at development patterns, I look at where the comprehensive plan guides development. And again, we talk about that development moving towards existing, uh, population areas in and around the existing, existing towns. In order to do that, the idea is to take pressure away from the county's rural areas. So, Commissioner Gesi, uh, I agree with some of your, your statements. And that will move us where I think we'll have a more robust discussion under item six, which would be land uses. Commissioner Boycourt, would you like to start the discussion?
Um, yes, they, uh, I, and that's the land use, the primary, uh, when it comes to land use, I go back to the vision of, and I think that we all agreed pretty much on that. Uh, but the second paragraph of our vision statement talks about, uh, recognizing this overall environment as an economic asset of the county, protection of our agricultural lands and waterways, and our harvest is a high priority. Moving development, and we've all seemingly agreed upon this because it's a, it's a smart growth and it's part of our plan, moving the development in and around the established towns is, is our goal. And this, this, it's that goal. But, um, the other thing is, the next statement, I want to come back to the environment, the other thing is the high quality of the county's infrastructure, including schools, roads, sewer, and waters, making as the county's needs change and grow. I think by going this large, i.e. two-thirds of the development for first phase, the county has very little control over what may be a 20-year process for the first stage. And, and the question is whether the county can react and provide the, the kind of infrastructure that's associated with that growth. I think it's, we have inadequate controls over that. So, that's, that's a concern. And the other aspect is, is that, um, the, the specific aspect of the environment, there's two concerns. One, the one that's been talked about many times in our, in our discussion by, by people testifying, that is the, the, uh, the, uh, the impact of the spray irrigation process on the headwaters of, uh, Creek. The fact that, that only 50% or so of spray irrigation systems seem to meet standards is a, is a substantial concern. In addition, this, um, amendment proposes the possibility of putting the initial, um, a, 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 a lot of sewer into the existing TRAP through its treatment plant. There's, there's another problem there. There, there is an apparent water body to which the TRAP outfall of is, is, that is directed, that's TRAP Creek. In addition, TRAP is only a BNR, uh, biological nutrient production level of plant. And I understand it, that they're not meeting the standards of BNR. All the other major plants in the county are, are moved to ENR, which is a much higher level of treatment. So, I would be against the, not just on the headwater, headwaters of Miles Creek, but also the existing, um, uh, plant, uh, of TRAP's impact on TRAP Creek.
Thank you. Commissioner Stranahan?
I think Commissioner Boycourt made some very good points there. However, I would like to point out, from looking at the maps provided, that although two-thirds of the land area has, is designated to be in this first phase, it does not appear that two-thirds of the units to be constructed are within this phase. The, the bulk of the development appears to be in Phase Two. So, we are looking, as the Chairman Council said, at a 30- or 50-year project. We have a, we don't know what that's going to bring, but we have to do the best we can now, trying to, um, look, look forward. The ENR plant is, is, from what I can find out, is as good a system as we can come up with right now. Spray irrigation is listed as one of the preferred, if not the preferred way of method of disposing of the, uh, treatment. What has been suggested by others is that we go to the TRAP, this, this development go with the TRAP or the Easton, um, facilities for treatment of the sewage, in which they would be, out the end of the pipe would go, drop directly into either La TRAP Creek from TRAP or the Chop Tank River. And they could monitor the outflows at the end of the pipe. What we have read and what we've been told, this is that the nutrient content at the outflows will be measured at the end of the pipe here as well. It's just that the end of the pipe is before it goes into the spray irrigation system, as opposed to going directly into our water, waterways. None of us want to see the waterways contaminated. But I, I don't see at this time where, um, what has been proposed is necessarily worse than what we're going to get by having all of this go directly into the creeks. I, I can't imagine that spray irrigation makes that, those nutrients increase as opposed to the end of the pipe coming directly out of the treatment plant.
Thank you. Commissioner Gesi?
Thank you. My first four points in my opening remarks commented on land use policies. I won't reiterate those. I do agree with Commissioner Boycourt. Furthermore, um, I do, um, respect, um, the recommendations of the Talbot County Public Works Advisory Board in their letter to the Talbot County Council, um, to vote against the amendment to Resolution 281. But vote in favor of the adoption of recommendation to. I think that they've borne over this again and again with MDE. I think they've become a real, they've understood all of the elements to this, um, very, very detailed. So, I, I look to their, um, recommendation as well as would certainly be willing to also work on, um, as they recommend, the council, county manager, county attorney, whomever, to develop the text of an appropriate amendment for consideration. And, um, back to my comment on the documents that I acquired late yesterday, um, I'd also like to ask legal counsel, uh, these are legal documents, if legal counsel could actually review, I don't know if this is appropriate, but I'd like to ask if it's appropriate, we would like to ask legal counsel who's present here, if they could, um, determine, um, whether or not, um, these have an, an impact on our decision today.
Thank you. Commissioner Spees?
Through this whole process, I would, I would say the land use has been the part that's given me the, the most heartburn and most concerns about, about this ruling that we're, we're charged with. And the toughest thing is, as a state, I guess I'm going to be on film and on record saying this, but as a state, I don't think we've done a good job of really explaining the guidelines of environmental impact and what is, what is the best practice, what is the worst practice, and how much loading each practice actually occurs, and which practices need offsets and not offsets, and how do you figure that number out? You start digging, going down that hole, that, that is, you know, you got to get your old-school Texas calculator out and figure that out. It, it is complicated. You can ask two, two, three experts and you get two or three different answers. But, but what we, what we do have and what we're dealing with is the state does have guidelines. And whether they're right or wrong, um, I wish they came to me earlier and asked me what it should be, but they didn't. But whether they're right or wrong, they've set guidelines. And from what I, I look at this project, the project has followed the state's recommendations. It's using enhanced nitrogen, enhanced nutrient removal system and, and the state's guidelines is set up where there's zero loading, um, to the local waterways. Is that right? Is that wrong? You know, I have an opinion, but for what I think this development, this development and future developments should, not only should use, but are required to use, is the state's guidelines. The state has told us that the system that they have in place and submitted in this application is the approved, one of the approved, if not one of the top-tier approved ways to deal with nutrient loading for this scale of a project. Um, and why I said I had heartburn in the beginning is because of past jobs, past experience, past very close colleagues of mine that I'm good friends with, bring up very good points, really good points. And that has made it difficult. So, when I, when I look at this, it's, again, am I going by my opinion or, or what it should be? Or is it appropriate to say, I need this development and future developments in the county to follow Talbot County and Maryland State guidelines for nutrient removal and nutrient loading? And I'm going to have to lean towards that. The, the one concern I, I would have is just, um, to bring up and talk about is, you know, if in the early stages, we aren't, if we're not spray irrigating and we're sending the early-stage wastewater to the wastewater to the Trap facility, then there is some nutrient loading, and are there any offsets and plans to deal with that? I know once the spray irrigation comes into play, the project is deemed zero nutrient loading, but prior to that, there will be some nutrient loading, and are there offsets? I couldn't find the answer to that. I don't know if Ray or anyone on staff has an idea of if there's offsets for that early loading, but that would be the one thing that I would have a conversation about with this project, because once it starts spray irrigating, as guided and ruled by the state, you know, and I do believe it's a good system, if operated, monitored, and run correctly.
Thank you. I did an interview several years ago, and I told the interviewer at the time, I said, "Other than my family, there's nothing I care more about than my farms." And I would carry that a step further to include the land and waters of Talbot County. Our family's been here a long time. We've made our living off the land. We continue to do that, and it's extremely important to me that future generations enjoy that same luxury. I've got family and I've got friends that either farm or work on the water all the way around this Trap area. So this, to me, is probably the biggest area that we should focus on among the others. So some of the testimony we've heard, and I'm going to refer to a review of waste loads from proposed wastewater treatment plants, and this was provided to us by Ray Clark. It says, "MDE has indicated that spray irrigation is net zero for nutrients at the root zone. The annual load of total nitrogen, 365 days a year, the units of pounds per year, at Phase Five, which is the end of this development, is set at 4,911 pounds." In the comments to that, it says, "The total nitrogen cap is eight pounds of total nitrogen per year." Now, this is talking, now, I'm going to refer to Region Two Wastewater Treatment Plant in St. Michael's of 660,000 gallons per day. So the total nitrogen cap is eight thousand, I'm sorry, not eight, 8,040 pounds of total nitrogen per year discharged directly into the Miles River. The total phosphorus cap for that 660,000 gallons a day, total phosphorus cap, 603 pounds of total phosphorus per year, method of discharge directly to the Miles River. We heard in the testimony that the discharge from this project will be the same in equivalence as a town of Easton, which, as Commissioner Stranahan said, discharges directly into Chop Tank River. So as a farmer, it looks to me, again, I'm going to agree with Commissioner Stranahan, that if that can be measured at the point before it goes to the spray irrigation field, there are some controls that can take place as opposed to discharging directly. But my hope is that this will continue to be monitored. It will be monitored in the phases that are proposed. As time goes on, I think the technology will improve, and I'm sure that the town and the developer will utilize this new technology. But the big question here is, do we trust our public works commissioned in the county? Do we trust our public works advisors in the town, in the county, I mean? And do we trust Maryland Department of Environment? And the answer to that is, if we do, then we should support them, and if we don't, then we should do something about it. So I'm not smart enough to know all the ins and outs and the regulations when it comes to Maryland Department of Environment. I'm not going to try to, but I have to assume, as Commissioner Stees said, that they know what they're doing with their job. I have full faith in Ray Clark and his analysis of this project. And I, therefore, again, when it comes to land use and the environment, again, you know, this has been a priority funding area for a long time. And I think, well, one more comment. Mr. Boycourt mentioned, and we got in the, in some of our testimony, that over 50% of these wastewater treatments have problems. We've got some information on that in generalities, but in my mind, if these were major infractions that couldn't be corrected immediately, that this technology and these wastewater treatment plants would not continue to be supported. So, again, my question is, are these paperwork errors? Are they minor adjustments to something? I don't know. But as the planning commission member, I should be provided by somebody, either the applicant or the exact things that they would like for me to consider. And we had that this morning by one of the applicants. We got a rather lengthy letter from them, and it stated a study, and I haven't honestly looked at it, other than the date, and the study was on wastewater treatment plants. And the date is 1990. Well, is that relevant today? I don't know. I don't know. But, again, I think this commission's charge is to look at the overall policy. We have to rely on the appropriate regulatory agencies for the details of the project. That's my opinion. So next, we'll go through to densities or intensities, which is our last item in our charge. Commissioner Boycourt, do you have any comments on this?
I'm not specific, no.
Okay. Commissioner Stranahan?
I have no specific comments on this.
Commissioner Desi?
It's my understanding that the densities and intensities comport with the plan of the city of Trap, so no further comment.
Commissioner Stees?
No comment on densities and intensities.
I agree with Commissioner Desi. I think the town administers its own zoning ordinance, has its own comprehensive plan and its development process. So that wraps up the seven charges that we had before us. And now what I'd like to do is give each commissioner time for a general recap of the project, and following that, we will entertain a motion for either recommended for approval or disapproval to the county council. So Commissioner Boycourt, we're going to start with you again.
Yeah, I guess it's somewhat of a repeat, but there's some like the letter we sent to the county council. I came to the same conclusion after reading the letter that I did about what makes that an end, and that, and I agree with everybody, everybody said this is where the development should be, this is, it's been approved, that town have it in their possession of the property. The primary question I have is the pace and scale of growth. And that the, there's, I think that the president proposed it going two-thirds, which though it's two-thirds of the area, it also implies two-thirds of the building. The applicant pointed out, and this is repeated in the Public Works Advisory Board memorandum, that the development of the project is planned to be completed in five separate phases of approximately 400 residential units per phase. The proposed wastewater treatment plant will be constructed in phases to business states under the size of each phase of development. The MDE permit, a draft permit it's called, would only require that permitee notify MDE for each 100,000 gallons per day of increase in flow. So there's no real control at that point. But if we sort of endorse, in my opinion, the five separate phases that the applicant has proposed, and this is in agreement with the Public Works Advisory Board, that will give the county a time to reflect, A, how well the proposed sewer treatment plant is working, and, but I think, at least it's important, how the county is doing with regard to the impact of this, the development on the infrastructure, on the schools, roads, on the fire, we listed all those in the letters from the council. So I don't think it's an outside burden on the part of the applicant to have the county step in, that's the only control they have, and look at how things are going at those five phases. Again, the phases may be 50 years, but still, to give cartilage, 50 years, when in fact the impact of this bigger development is going to be a substantial effect, not just on the neighbors around Trap, the inhabitants of Trap, but the county as a whole. And the county has a lot of impact and a lot of concern about that, and should, in my opinion. So I'm definitely in support of the Public Works Advisory Committee Board and its primary recommendations. I think they're very well considered, and I don't think that going to a five or other type of number, but two is adequate, in my opinion. So I'm against this, the proposed amendment, for that reason. Notice that it's not against the development, it's just that we think, I'm sorry about the Public Works Advisory Board agreeing that it would be good for the county to weigh in on those statements.
Thank you, Bill. Commissioner Stranahan?
I too like what the Public Works Advisory Board had to say. However, and if this was 2003, 2006, before we were this far down the road with this development, I would have a lot more questions to ask about this development and how it's proceeding forward. The, again, the housing that is proposed in the first phase of, the first section of this, which, again, my understanding is that as the housing is constructed within the first phase of the water and sewer allocation, is, will be in phases, and that naturally occurs anyway, that we have an opportunity here to have our say, to look into this, to go away from the original proposal, which was to approve the entire site as S1W1. This is certainly, as Commissioner Stees said earlier, a better situation than what we were presented with a few months ago. The impact on the county is going to be huge over the next 30 to 50 years, but the face of the county is going to be very much different, probably even 10 or 20 years from now, when it is, gives the county the time to make arrangements and plans for roadways, for schools, for other types of amenities that are going to be required to be provided by the county. Again, as I said earlier, in many ways, as far as this development goes, the ship has sailed, as Commissioner Stees said, this has already been decided. Right now, we're just trying to get the best outcome for the county that we can have. And as far as the comprehensive plan goes, which is what our charge is here today, both the developers and the town of Trap seem to have dotted their i's and crossed their t's on making this fit within our comprehensive plan and also what MDE requires.
Thank you. Commissioner Desi?
Thank you. I think Chairman Council brings up a really good point in do we trust, you know, our various parties that are providing us information to make the best decision possible. And unfortunately, poring over those documents, and I want to trust everybody in what they've presented to us, and now reading the document that Ray Clark has presented to us this morning, it's the first time I've seen it, I mean, I'm heartened to see that the loads are substantially less, and I appreciate, this was a question I asked at the last meeting, I appreciate, you know, seeing that. But there are inconsistencies in the documents that we've also gotten where we're not agreeing. You know, we can trust, we can trust people, but, you know, we also need to come to a mutual understanding of consistency, and that's where I'm struggling, because I just, there's too many inconsistencies for me, not to mention the inconsistencies that I've mentioned with respect to policies and land use, et cetera, but there's inconsistencies within who's doing what to whom and why. I don't get the sense that this project has come any further in the last 18 years. These questions were the same questions asked in 2002. So are we really causing the developer to spin his wheels when nothing's happened? They withdrew their application in 2009 for MDD, and resubmitted. The town of Trap withdrew the application. So it's not like it's, yes, it's been on the docket, but we've been in these, a couple of economic downturns. We're in another economic downturn. And I ask, what, isn't it a, hopefully, a possible outcome to work together to come up with something that will be a reflection of our entire community? Why is that such a difficult thing to ask? And I do think we need some time to review additional documents. I'd like some time to review the letter from Armistead Griswold. I'd like some time to look at this, I don't think I've seen this before, the Talbot, another document provided. I just feel like there's too many inconsistencies, and why is it so necessary? There's no deadline on the resolution today. Why can we not have one more month to review and try to get more of these pieces in place so that we make the best possible decision for all of us in the county?
Thank you. Mr. Stees?
Yes. Again, I want to reiterate the statement from Commissioner Boycourt and Commissioner Stranahan. The Public Works Advisory Board has been a great partner to the planning commission, all the way through writing, rewriting and going over the comprehensive plan to other projects we've done together. They're a tremendous asset to the county. With that said, their charge and what they submitted to the county council is totally different than our charge. They were writing an opinion on what, how that amendment and how the Resolution 281 should look. And I agree with everything that they said in that. I wish the county council would have implemented more of their recommendations into that plan. They chose not to, and they've submitted this amendment and this resolution to us to find if it is compliant with our comprehensive plan. So even though I agree with a lot that was said by the Public Works Advisory Board, again, our charge is different than what their charge was, and that's what I'm voting on today. On the five-phase approach, my opinion is, you know, if I can support and would find the five-phase approach compliant with moving the property from S2W2 to S1W1, then really, in the long-term process of thinking, then I have to find that the two-phase approach, as submitted to us, is compliant with the comprehensive plan of moving the section as submitted to us, is compliant with the comprehensive plan of moving the sections from S2, W2 to S1, W1. Is that my preferred, preferred phase approach that they submitted? Not really, but in my ruling and how I'm going to vote today is that even though I have some concerns, and even though I wish things were done differently in the past, which submitted in front of me today by the county council, and what I have to rule on, you know, I do think, I do think it is in line with our comprehensive plan, and it has followed, it has followed our county and state procedures to, for development process. So the one thing that I will say is the concern with any large-scale project is that we, as a county, and Trap as a municipality, are going to have to stay very diligent in mind the details of how that facility is run, because the issue's going to come up, and the issues that arise are going to come from mismanagement. And if anything is mismanaged, there's issues, and, you know, that's where the concern is, and that's where in the future, we as a county have to stay involved, stay diligent, in making sure that that new facility is run correctly, because when things are big, the problems are big. So that's where I'm at on this.
Thank you. So a couple of things, and I'm going to refer back to a couple of things. First, I appreciate your time and the work that each of the commissioners have put into this. And part of my comments here are how I feel, obviously, but also, I am going to loosely address some things that were presented to us. So it's time for a little history lesson. So Talbot County was one of the first counties in Maryland to have a zoning ordinance. We were one of the first to have a comprehensive plan in 1973, which again, said, should and encourage new growth around the population center. In 1987 or '88 was when the critical area law became into effect, and we went in the critical areas to a zoning of one per 20, a density, and I think, so then in 1990, we redid the comprehensive plan, it was a large group involved in that, each of the major organizations were involved at the time, Farm Bureau was represented, some of the other organizations were represented as well, the business community. That was a big change for Talbot County. Again, we went from a zoning density of one dwelling unit per two acres to one per 20 plus three in the rural areas. Designated growth areas were talked about, maybe not as formally as in later comprehensive plans, but the consensus was, if we were going to save Talbot County, then growth had to be directed in the right area. And Trap, again, was one of those areas identified. In 1997, the comprehensive plan was revisited again, again, there was a large, large group that was involved in that. The comprehensive plan was again updated in 2000 and the following. In 2005, there were over 100 citizens committee members, over 100. We started that in 2001, it ended in 2004. So it was not a lately thought-out thing, it was, we met at least once a month, sometimes twice a month. So that brings us to our current comprehensive plan, which is Bill 1329. So the comprehensive plan, our current comprehensive plan, started in 2011. Forty-five county citizens served on review committees based on the chapters. The Planning Commission forwarded those recommendations to the county council in 2015, four years, four years. Among those discussions were, trap, among other things, where development should occur, how it should occur, how we could and should protect environmentally sensitive areas and rural areas of the county. Then the county council hosted eight public work sessions, resulting in...
...four years, four years. All those discussions were, other than, should protect...
Excuse me, callers, can you mute your phones, please?
...and rural areas. Then the county council hosted eight public work sessions.
Hello?
Yes, for those that are on the phone, can you please mute your phone? I agree, my statements are important, so it was worth repeating. Again, the Planning Commission reviewed the amendments in January and February of 2016 and updated the comprehensive plan, which became effective August 6, 2016. Then our zoning maps, Phase 1, Bill 1376. In that phase, we made modifications to the village boundaries based off our comprehensive plan. We had community meetings in almost every village. We adopted those maps February 10, 2018. Phase 2 of the zoning bill, Bill 1401, was Chapter 190. We had listening sessions that began in late 2016, public discussions relating to the issues and option papers from those listening sessions through 2017 were generated. There were over 75 meetings before sending the Planning Commission recommendation to the county council in May of 2018. The county council hosted several work sessions with staff, the Planning Commission, and the public. Several of those proposed amendments were sent back to this Planning Commission for recommendation or revisal in 2018. Bill 1401 was adopted by the county council and became effective November 10, 2018. Then we started on our village zoning, Bill 1402, and this applied the new village zoning to all 22 villages throughout the county. That became effective November 10, 2018 as well. Again, we continue to monitor the critical area and those bills, Bill 1411, to make sure there was consistency. So I guess the allegations and the charges that the county has not had a plan, has not looked forward, I would take issue to that. Again, I think when this Planning Commission looks at its charge to look at consistency with the comprehensive plan, we are charged with the seven items that we discussed and nothing more. When it comes to the design standards, again, this has been annexed into the town of Trap, it's up to that town for the design. I'm sure the county and the citizens will have input into that, I feel sure of that. I think the county has a good working relationship with the town of Trap, and I think they would welcome any input from the county. So I don't feel like this is over, I don't feel like the book's been closed. As far as the phases of the development, I think the market will dictate those phases. My hope is that the advocacy groups and our environmental groups in the county, which I have a lot of respect for, we don't always agree, but that's a good thing, I hope they continue to monitor this project, no matter what the outcome is, no matter how many phases. It's up to them. For the neighboring property owners that are concerned, I sympathize with you, I would have concerns as well. If I were a neighbor, I would insist, ask for at my own expense, I'd put in a monitoring bell. I would want to know what's going on in my property. And if something went awry, I would look to the proper authority to correct that. Again, I have faith in Ray Clark, I think he is an expert at what he does. When it comes to those type things, I'm going to have to rely on him. When it comes to the comprehensive plan and its consistency with this project, I think this Planning Commission is more than qualified to make that decision. I have faith in every one of you. Again, we might not agree on every point, but you all have my utmost respect, and I hope I have the same for you. We'll discuss these matters, we'll do it in a civil way, and we'll come at it better for the county. Commissioner Gesi has asked for some additional time. So in respect for her, I would like to have the discussion of possibly delaying this vote by a week. I would prefer that it not go for a month. My question for the planning office is, if we were to give it an additional week to review some documentation that was provided to us this morning and to address some of Commissioner Gesi's concerns, is that practical, or is it easier to move it out a month?
I'm trying to confirm, I'm trying to confirm, I want to see when it's scheduled for the county council, and Tony may know the answer to that question when this is scheduled, if they're discussing the possibility of delaying the decision for one week? Would that appear out? I'm not sure if it's on the June 9 agenda or not.
I was just going to say, I can check the June 9 agenda. I don't believe it's on there. Do you have it up?
I do.
Okay.
So for those who came here, we're reviewing the county council agenda to make sure that we sync with their agenda.
So with it not being on that agenda, I anticipate that there wouldn't be any issues with you delaying your decision, as opposed to your decision to delay that question?
What would be the easiest way to do that, Mary Kay, again, if we were to delay it for one week?
You would need to postpone your decision, and we would reschedule the meeting for a date that's convenient for the commission to reconvene and rehear this, and we would just continue this as old business.
Okay. So again, it is the pleasure of the commission, so it looks to me like we could entertain a motion to postpone to a later date and reconvene, or we could move forward with the applicant's and the request today. So with that, I'm willing to enter, hold on, yep?
We have our technical advisory committee next Wednesday, so I'm not sure if that date is really convenient for staff to be able to man book of those meetings. So we would like the opportunity to just post it on our webpage, once we confirm a meeting place and a meeting time, because I'm not sure who is meeting in this room or where we can reconvene, hopefully back in this room.
The Open Meetings Act just requires a reasonable advance notice of the meeting, so when we know the date, we would take steps to advertise that. That can't be, you know, just eight hours beforehand, even 24 hours beforehand, that's too short. So we need more lead time than that.
I'm sure we could confirm with the, whether this room is available. I'm not sure if you all are available next, maybe Thursday morning? Just prefer not to do it on Wednesday, just because we have conflict meetings.
So again, it is the pleasure of the rest of the Planning Commission, I am prepared to go either way. So with that, we'll move forward with some type of motion in some direction.
I motion that we, pardon the non-technical language, I motion that we decide a later date, I believe that would be Thursday next week, giving us the time to review materials recently obtained, and for legal counsel to review another set of documents and distribute those as well to the Planning Commission, so that we might make a final vote on this on Thursday, June the 11th.
At 9:00?
At 9:00.
I will second that. Okay, we have a motion and a second to postpone the application for the town of Trap and Trap East Holdings Business Trust to next Thursday, June, was that 11th? 11th, at 9:00 a.m. in this room. There will be no testimony, there will be no comments, it'll be a motion, discussion, and a vote. So with that, all those in favor of the motion, again, we will signify by roll call vote. Miguel?
Commissioner Boycourt?
Aye.
Commissioner Stranahan?
Aye.
Commissioner Gesi?
Aye.
Commissioner Spees?
Aye.
Chairman Council?
Aye. Okay, so we will reconvene this part of the meeting next Thursday, 9:00, unless otherwise posted on the county website. I'm sorry for the delay for all those, again, but it is important, this is an important matter, so we will take the time. Mary Kay?
I just want to note that the public record was actually closed as of close of business yesterday?
Correct.
And you have significant information to review and read, I'm not sure if you're...
No, so we are not taking anything further. Again, we got a lengthy letter from Armistead League, Russ and Ray, and I do want to have the time to review that, as were the other commissioners, and as well as some information that was provided to us yesterday, so we want to make sure that we give that adequate time. So thank you for your patience in this matter, and with that, we will move to new business. Mary Kay, do we have any new business?
Yes, sir.
Okay, discussion items. One thing I, and this is more, well, maybe I'll postpone it to Commissioner's. So next, we'll move to staff matters, applicant, Department of Planning and Zoning, Agent Miguel Suenas, Assistant Planning Officer, recommendation to the county council, the Grant Cordova Village Master Plan. Miguel?
We're going to give this a second to get the presentation up on the screen. I'm going to shift to the back of room 32, if that's okay.
So thank you, members of the commission. I'm glad to be here today, the staff's glad to be here today, to present the Cordova Village Master Plan. This effort comes from the comprehensive plan, which calls for the development of master plans in village planning areas in Talbot County. Now, village planning areas are those villages that are zoned, Village Mix and Village Hamlet. Do you want to go to that slide? We have 22 villages in Talbot County. Our first two master plans that we've developed since the comprehensive plan was approved in 2016 were the master plans for Bellew and Tillman. So this is the first village master plan that we drafted that is east of 50, and I'm glad for that, because I think we have focused a lot of effort, whether it's extension of sewer services, or whether it's economic incentives and zoning incentives, and efforts on coastal resiliency west of Highway 50, but I'm glad we were able to get out to the more agricultural part of Talbot County and speak with the citizens in Cordova to come up with this plan. And so we're hoping that the way that this plan is set up, its structure, its process, serves as a model for future village planning efforts that we intend to do to accomplish the objective of the comprehensive plan. The Village of Cordova, and I'm going to make this presentation brief, you had a presentation previously at the joint work session with the county council, but just some things but just some things to remember. The Village of Cordova is a little over 700 acres. It's about the same number of residents when you look at the designated census place population. And it is mostly agricultural and forested. 63% of the land area within the village boundaries is either forested or in agricultural use currently. After that, then about 19% or so is residential. A little less than that is commercial uses, and then less than that are institutional uses such as schools and post offices and churches. The, oh, before that. So these village plans are designed to respond to future growth in villages, to discuss and identify what citizens and other important stakeholders believe are the critical challenges, and also to discuss economic development, in some cases redevelopment, in a way that is compatible with the character of these villages. There was an ambitious timeline for this master plan. The Bellevue Tillman took a little bit longer, but we wanted to expedite the development of this plan. It started in July with our first community event, actually, it might have been early August. And then the draft, for the most part, was completed at the end of December. The reason why we wanted to expedite this plan because there have been potential economic development opportunities in the Village of Cordova, specifically on the old poultry site, and we wanted to make sure that we had enough feedback from the citizens and the stakeholders for the Village of Cordova that could provide input into those economic Just for those, especially who are listening or live streaming or are on the call, the Cordova Village Master Plan is posted online at www.nextstep190.com. You can pull up that Village Master Plan there. The plan itself is divided into four parts. First is a basic introduction. The second are some existing conditions in the village, which help the planners and other people understand what is currently happening. And then the third are community issues, and the fourth are the plan recommendations under goals and objectives and strategies. We had two community meetings. I think they were very well attended in the Village of Cordova. On page 27 of the master plan, there's a really interesting issues matrix there that you can take a look at. It identifies the issues in level of importance by certain key input sources such as key stakeholders or those that attended the event and participated in roundtables, those who participate and provided input on display boards at the open houses. And if you take a look at that, you'll see how the issues are rated, and that factored into the development of the recommendations for the Village Master Plan. This is the vision statement that really came out of the comments of breakout groups that were at the first community meeting in the Village of Cordova. I'm just gonna read it really quick. "Cordova Village is a small, quiet, mixed, close-knit, diverse community of homes and businesses set among a picturesque working landscape of farms and natural areas. Cordova is convenient to the busy bustling outside world but is a respite from it. A traditional and safe place where families, neighbors, farmers, and businesses look out for one another in remote community. Cordova is open to well-planned change that promotes jobs and economic activity. Cordova offers diverse opportunities for people of all backgrounds and income levels to live and work and to come together. Cordova is a place that provides many day-to-day needs, housing, work, education, recreation, and social activity. And Cordova respects its past but accepts change that promotes its health, traditional values, and way of life." The, I would characterize the master plan as sort of a light touch in terms of recommendations, which are very different than the previous two master plans that we did. The Tillman Master Plan is one that is really characterized by a lot of strategies centered on economic revitalization related to its maritime industry, as well as issues related to attainable housing, among other things. In Bellevue, it was more focused on pedestrian improvements as well as maintaining the historic character of Bellevue, at least in historic areas of Bellevue, and also maintaining and revitalizing its historic working waterfront properties. In the Village of Cordova, I think there was a lot of sentiment that they liked the way things were in the Village of Cordova, but there were a lot of smaller things, I think, that they wanted to see improve in the village to help the quality of life there and to help manage future growth. And so it was a really, for the consultants, RKK helped us with this plan. I think it was really for them a challenge to determine how to balance the need for, we don't want a lot of change here. We like the way things are. We appreciate our community, its peacefulness. But there are some things that we've identified as issues, and I think the consultants did a good job of capturing that. The Village Master Plan includes a conceptual plan that is really defined as the heart of Cordova Village. It's where the old train depot used to be. It now is a lot, I believe that's owned by the state in Maryland. It also has the recycling collection center there. And there were many residents who identified that as really a center of the village that could use some improvements. This is a current view that I pulled up and put on this slide of that spot. You can see the recycling collection bins off to the left. You can see Railroad Avenue in the background, and the foreground is Bellevue Road. And that's what it looks like today. But if you go to the conceptual plan, which is the next slide, you can see that the consultants have drawn a conceptual plan in the master plan that either proposes to relocate the recycling bins off-site somewhere else or to shift them to the northeast, that's northeast, shift them to the northeast and screen them. There were a lot of complaints during the master plan process that that collection center sometimes is unsightly, that there are things that are left on the ground outside the collection bins, and a lot of times they are overflowing. And so that's the purpose of the screening. The plan also talks about in this village center, a mid-block crossing right over Cordova Road, which would, could potentially lead to a new path to, a new park connection to the existing parking, the Village of Cordova. It also displays striped parking spaces right alongside Railroad Avenue for vehicles to park and as well as a small plaza that would be in the middle of that block. It shows a, or it describes a bus shelter that could be there for the existing bus that, I can't remember what route it is, but for that bus to actually stop and pick up bus riders, and also additional landscaping around that center. The master plan also talks about certain gateways at entry points into the village, and so there's a diagram or graphic in there that shows where those potential gateways that could be, where they could be enhanced by signage, other types of well signage and landscaping, and other types of unique identifiers that signify that you're entering into the Village of Cordova, and also that you're also entering into an area that has a mix of uses and potential pedestrians on the roadway. Cordova Road doesn't have any sidewalks, and so part of the purpose of having these kind of gateways also is to slow traffic down a little bit. There is, from what we observed during our field visits to Cordova, there are considerable number of vehicles that speed through that corridor. The master plan includes suggestions or recommendations for an overlay zone that allows for smaller lots and sizes and setbacks, because they did, the consultants did an analysis. The average setback, front setback, the average side setback, the average lot sizes in Cordova found that those averages are smaller than what the VM zoning district actually includes. But there are also a wide range of sizes of lots, for example, as well. And so an overlay zone could help create bulk requirements that are unique to the Village of Cordova. The Village Master Plan has strategy recommendations related to alternative design options that could be included in the overlay district. And in the village mixed zoning district, you can have buildings over 5,000 square feet, commercial buildings, but only by special exception. And the master plan notes that there are existing buildings currently in the village that are over 5,000 square feet, and that number might be a little bit too low and perhaps suggesting the number as part of that overlay district. And then finally, the master plan has recommendations related to infrastructure, safety, and circulation, including exploring public sewer options that would help create smaller lots that are more in the traditional character of the Village of Cordova. Also, public sewer systems are good for business attraction, development, and redevelopment, and also for the type of attainable housing that Cordova is known for, as well as the scale of housing that is in the traditional character of the Village of Cordova. So with that, that's the end of my presentation. I know you had a detailed presentation from the consultants a few months back, and open for questions and discussion on the master plan.
Sure. Any comments, questions? Mr. Strahan here? I don't have none of this time. Mr. Gesi?
Hi, Miguel, Mr. Salinas. I have a question. We were also provided a concern about the pedestrian trail. I wondered if you could comment on that?
Sure. There is an old rail bed that goes through the Village of Cordova. Whether, I know there have been previous discussions about conversion of that old rail bed to a pedestrian bike trail. And we didn't want to, in the Village Master Plan, not respond to that. So should that ever be converted to routes to trails, there could be opportunities to incorporate that into the village center. Currently, the county has contracted with State DNR as well as National Park Service Rivers and Trails Program to study the feasibility of a routes to trails, much larger routes to trails along that old rail bed. That would be called a Frederick Douglass Trail. And so they're doing a scoping study on that. They're looking at feasibility. They're looking at potential issues, and I believe there's also community outreach events that are also included in the scope of their work. But long and the short of it is, nothing has been decided on that. But we did not want to, at least, address it in some way in the plan, although we feel it's addressed in a very limited fashion.
Mr. Spies?
I just want to put on record that I think that how this process went about is very good, and I encourage it for each community to go through it. Sometimes as a community, and sometimes, you know, even as a commissioner up here, you can feel like things are moving forward in your hometown or your home community that you don't have any control or input on. So to give multiple opportunities for the community to put input into something at this early of the stage is very valuable. And now the charge for us is to take those comments and take this plan and make sure we live up to the standard that the community put into the plan. You know, as we move forward, especially someone like me that's opinionated, you know, may have some different visions or different ideas about what I would like to see in my hometown. Why this is such a good process in my mind is it can say, Paul, the whole community came together, and this is a kind of a community's plan to move forward in the future. And that's very helpful for someone like me that sits on a commission like this, to have a document that tells me, you know, to some level, what the community is looking for and how they want their community to be developed. So I appreciate it. It's gonna be very helpful, and I look forward to seeing, you know, other communities and other small villages and hamlets do the same thing because it will be a nice tool and document for us to have moving forward in the future. So thank you for your work.
Yeah, I would echo your comments, Miguel. Also, I think it's gonna be imperative as we look to the future of Cordova. We talked about that overlay zone, and I think that we're gonna need that to make things work and to make the most efficient use of the land that's located within the village. I've been for the comments.
I wondered also what the status was of the American salmon aquaculture?
I have not heard recently. I believe they're still in the planning phase and in the investment phase. We hope to get an update soon on that. But regardless, we don't, I think, I think we don't want to lose the opportunity to be able to identify the right kind of use and the right kind of zoning regulations to make redevelopment happen on that site. It is, it was, much like Tillman Packing Company was the center of employment for Tillman, the Allen Marine property was the center of employment for Cordova, and it did sustain, for a population of 750 people or so, it sustained a couple businesses there, which no longer exist. And so it is important for us. And so I'm sure we'll be having further discussions with the investors of that project to determine its status and other ways, you know, what ways we can help facilitate redevelopment on that site.
Well, thank you, and I commend you and the staff for bringing the community together and getting everyone's input. And I know that you, the outreach there was repetitive to ensure that as many people came together as possible and that you reached out to them in many types of ways to ensure that. So thank you for that.
Thank you. We were thrilled with the attendance. We didn't know what we would get, but RKK did a great job, I think, in organizing that, and we were extremely pleased with the attendance.
Commissioner Boycourt, are you still with us?
I am. I want to echo Paul's and Lisa's praise for this process. I was overwhelmed that we all were attending those meetings to see the, first of all, the numbers and the spirit of Cordova. I thought that was wonderful. I, that's such an easy, positive thing to like in the process. I thought it was great. And I think that RKK did great jobs. I mean, the staff did a great job. I know that Chip knew I was a fan of rail trails, just to address that briefly, and brought to me the concerns that were, and so what I did was volunteer, Chip and I, without fully asking his permission, to attend the meetings when some of these study meetings were held. The concerns they bring up are legitimate concerns. The benefits listed in the, potential benefits listed in the master plan are also substantial. So the idea is how to, can these concerns be addressed and are there measures that can be done? I'm confident they are, having traveled a lot of...
I'm confident they are, having traveled a lot of rail trails and through a lot of farmland and through urban areas, and there are some conflicts there. And I'm always amazed that when I ride the bike and also when I drive cars through there, there are, there are ways of handling all that. And I think, again, I think these concerns are legitimate, and it's good to bring them out earlier than later. So anyway, I think that, I think this is a great plan, and I'm proud of the staff for doing it.
Well, thanks for volunteering me. I actually do have a few moments of spare time coming up at some point, so thanks. So Miguel, are we looking for any formal action today?
None today. We just wanted to have discussion, you know, open, open ended discussion if there are questions on the master plan. You know, if there are suggested changes to anything in the master plan, you can certainly consider those, discuss them today. And we'll schedule this at most likely the subsequent meeting that will have the planning commission for consideration of recommendation to the county council. At that time, you can certainly propose changes as well. Also between today and the next meeting, of course, I'm available for discussion on anything in the master plan.
And I think it is important, as that progresses, that that illustration from the consultant on the old train station site, that that is conceptual, because I think there might be a little misconception within the community that things are going to happen there that, you know, probably won't look quite like the conceptual plan. So that would be my own advice.
Yeah, we'll make that really clear, and I appreciate that. The one thing that people don't, I think, mistake sometimes in the master plans are these illustratives, which they really are illustratives. They're concept plans that are in master plans, but they're just that, they're concept plans. Obviously, if the county and citizens were to pursue some enhancement to that site, that's going to be a much more, different type of planning process that will identify the actual components of that. And so, they are completely illustrative. But what's more important is the concept and why citizens felt that they wanted to do something more than what exists there currently.
So, not to drag this out, but the recycling bins, are they the responsibility of the county? Does that come under?
They are not. I think that they are the responsibility of Maryland Department of Environment, but I think Public Works might coordinate with them on that.
That would be a major improvement, you know, as the center of town, as state, you know, that would be, that's the biggest thing I'd like to see come out of this at all.
Yeah, and actually, a couple things. One is, a lot of the recommendations in here, when I say it's master plan light, what I really mean by that is, a lot of these can be done at very little cost. Now, for the county, everything comes at a budgetary cost because we rely so much on grant funding to get a lot of these projects done. But really, we're not talking millions of dollars to install a watch for pedestrians sign on Cordova Road near the intersection. Anytime you have an intersection that's skewed at a 90-degree angle, it's really dangerous for bicyclists and for pedestrians trying to cross that road. So putting that sign up isn't expensive. I would argue putting a mid-block crosswalk isn't all that expensive. Doing some gateway enhancements are not expensive. And also implementing components of that enhanced village center slash park is not expensive either here. So that's one thing I wanted to say. The second is, I did have a resident or a business owner of the village ask if, if there could be some mention in the master plan, or maybe you don't need to, but maybe this is worthy of discussion. There is historic structure that used to be a gas station. Paul probably knows the name of that gas station was right on Cordova Road across from the old train depot. And it now is in private property. It's, but it is listed under the Maryland Inventory of Historic Properties. And this business owner, and maybe others that are with this particular owner or not in terms of the sentiment, believes that it would be a shame to lose that historic structure and has asked the county to, you know, is there opportunities to be able to relocate that structure into the park? And talks about perhaps having a small structure for the store and the garden tools or for a little display area or to do something there, that would be relocate that structure into the park. And so, I just wanted to mention that to the planning commissioners. Again, it could be something that is referenced in the master plan or it could be something that can be talked about at the time that we look at a development of that old train depot site.
Just for a point of clarification, is that, is that rice or?
No, no, no. So right across, it's actually, if you were at the intersection where the store is facing the firehouse, it would be to the left down there, maybe, I'm going to guess 75 yards or less. Yep, yep. So the only other suggestion I would make, and this is just practical, instead of having a crosswalk mid-block, which would be about in that area, you know, I wonder if it would make more sense to widen the corner of the intersection so that it could intercept with the same sidewalk there instead of splitting a property or a property line. In other words, it looks like to me, if the crosswalk were mid-block, you're going to have a corner between there and skipping Cordova Road that's kind of going to be in limbo or grow up or hang out or, I don't know. But if you could take that corner and just clear it to widen it, to make it do what you wanted to do. And it might not be possible, Mr. Sanz.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that comment. And that mid-block crosswalk, there are certain best practices in terms of location of those crosswalks.
Right.
I think in the conceptual plan, it's probably a little bit too close to that corner. There should be a minimum distance. But there are several options. If this were to come to fruition, I'd like to work with the state highway administration to come up with a little design meeting with the residents and come up with several options of the design of that mid-block crosswalk. But it would have to go somewhere.
Sure.
So it wouldn't happen unless it connected to Rose Street, which is right now a paper street. The master plan says that that is owned by the residents, that it's a private road. The county used to maintain it, doesn't maintain it anymore. Now it's owned by the neighboring properties along Rose Street, which goes to the park. But I've also heard the other argument that it's a paper street, nothing has been needed over to those neighbors, and so it still is technically a county road. So we'd have to sort that out, but if Rose Street was ever used as a pathway, not a road, but as a pathway to get to the park, then it makes sense to do that, some sort of crosswalk.
Sure. Yep, good deal.
So in the conceptual plan, it looks like the current liquor store, which is definitely dangerous because the parking, even a little car is like kind of out into, so it showed where you rotate the parking around to the side, but it also looked like it was further off the road. Was the road being moved or is it proposed to move the building back?
No, the road's not being proposed to move. That master plan just says, if that private property owner ever redevelops that site, or a property owner redevelops that site for a commercial business, that the suggestion is redesign the new building, not keep it at the same footprint, but redesign it so it's more oriented in the way it's depicted in that ground.
So it would be moving, the building would be moved?
Yeah.
The other thing is just a general comment is, I agree with Chip, the recycling there can, you know, you know, get messy. But for the entire county out in our rural communities, you know, we've had three different trash services that have recycling, and they cancel recycling, and then, you know, for someone with a young family, like we're trying to teach our kids to recycle. So that is, that's one of like a mixed feelings. I hate how it looks, but we use it on a weekly basis. You know, it's one of our kids' chores. So whatever we do, you know, making that more attractive, not just making it go away, because us in rural Tulsa County currently do not really have any other avenues of recycling. Most of our trash services have either canceled it or made it so owners that people aren't doing it. So that is an outlet for us in the community that are recycling.
There were many residents at the second community meeting that suggested relocating it off-site. One of the suggestions was the Blue Lantern site that the county owns just south of the elementary school. I think it's mentioned in the master plan, but there are, and I think you might have a letter that was submitted prior to today's meeting, but there are people who don't want it moved, for the reason that they feel that it's good to have recycling collection right in the heart of the village. And so, if that were to be the case, then I think we would look at the opportunity to relocate it in a different part of that property and perhaps screen it so it serves its function, but yet is, you know, a part of the village center concept.
Good. Yes.
I have just one more question. I was interested in the plan noting that a 501(c)(3) could be formed by someone in the community to advance this, and that leadership is really something that would be great coming out of it. I'm just wondering if there has been any leadership to establish a 501(c)(3) or to take on any of the other projects that you've mentioned?
There has not, to the best of my knowledge. You know, my impression, just being out in Cordova during this planning process, is the village fire department really is, really serves a lot of that function as just a convener of community meetings. I think the master plan suggests if there is a group that wants to formalize a 501(c)(3) group, they can do it with the fire department being a 501(c)(3) as the fiscal agent. Or it doesn't need to be formalized, but Cordova, I think part of the suggestion too, is a group like that could also be advocates for implementation of components of this master plan. The best example of that I have of that in Tulsa County is Tillman, which since the master plan has been completed, and actually while the master plan was still going on, there has been an active group there that has had several meetings, of course, it's been on hold recently, that have, that group has actually accomplished a number of things in Tillman, working and pressuring to get the dredging done in Ash Narrows, the interactive bank, ATM, kiosk, and other things going on there. They chose not to be formalized, but even in an informal way, they have, I think, made a major difference in Tillman. So the same thing could happen in Cordova.
Great.
Thank you. Okay, moving to our next agenda item, applicant department of planning and zoning, Miguel Salinas, recommendation to the county council, draft working waterfront overlay district.
Thanks. I'm going to just get my presentation ready. Before I start, this is going to be a little bit more involved discussion, I think, just because of the complexity of the, of the draft, I think, in terms of zoning, what the regulations say. But you can think of land use regulations as a triangle, and at the apex, at the top of that triangle, my light wasn't on here, I'm telling everybody else to do that. At the top of that triangle are single-family dwelling homeowners. And looking at the 30,000-foot level, land use regulations and restrictions are really there to protect, for the most part, those single-family dwelling homeowners, because number one, they want to protect their home values, and, which is oftentimes their biggest asset for many homeowners. And they want to protect their homes for many incompatible uses. Usually, at the bottom of that triangle are renters and multifamily dwelling owners. And so, in order to do that, we create these land use regulations that segregate land uses. So in this area, you can only have single-family dwellings, and in this area, you can only have business parks, and in this area, you can only have retail. Or you create bulk requirements that ensure that it protects the economic value of these homes, so you have large lot sizes, for example. Now, I'm simplifying this because I'm not talking about the other laudable goals as well in land use planning, which are environmental goals, we certainly see that with the critical area. There's growth management goals, which we had a considerable discussion on this morning, and our agricultural preservation goals that also factor into that. But from a simplified view, that's how I look at it. And for those that know me well, they know that I have two interests. One is, I have a passion for urban design, which I don't get to use a lot of in Tulsa County, but that's one of my passions. And my other passion is this intersection between economic development and the market and land use planning. So those are my two huge interests. So if you think about land use regulations that way, the segregation of land uses, these bulk requirements that are really there to protect homeowners, it really is the antithesis of Tillman in its development history, because in Tillman, you just didn't have that. You could have one residential lot that has a home on it right next to a marine-based business, right next to another residential lot, right next to another marine-based business. And that really flies in the face of traditional, conventional land use and zoning. And that's what makes the village of Tillman so unique. But it also is what creates conflict between homeowners and businesses. Somehow, in Tillman's history, they have just figured it out. They just figured out how to do it. I think, you know, we have been hearing about some recent conflicts, but for the most part, Tillman has figured it out, and that's something unique about Tillman. And so I want you to keep that in mind when we discuss this draft and this new zoning ordinance. The second thing I wanted to mention is that, from an economic development strategy, I view zoning regulations as an economic development tool. So that means a zoning district that targets commercial development should be able to target it in a way that provides regulations that can capture the economic market within 10 to 20 years. And that zoning, that zoning, those zoning regulations are developed after a master plan is done. Then you implement that zoning, and then you create effective incentives, including financial incentives, and then you brand that area, you market it. And to me, that's a really good economic development strategy. So we're really in the second phase of this. We did the master plan, now we're working on the zoning implementation to, what we're betting is a zoning district that will capture the market that it's trying to achieve, which is maritime-dependent, maritime-related, maritime-enhanced uses in Tillman. And we certainly hope that that's going to be the case with this zoning district. The last thing I wanted to mention before I start is Gary Crawford, who was a resident on the island, passed away recently, and since I stepped on the island, he's been a friend of mine. He has educated me about the island. He was the local historian. He owned the bookstore in Tillman. I miss him. He'll be missed, and he certainly has an imprint into development of the master plan as well as the development of this zoning district, and I can't say enough for him. And so, I just wanted to point that out. So to start, the reason why we want to create this zoning district is based on the outcome of the village master plan, which was, the master plan says that residents want to sustain the waterman's way of life in Tillman. We know that there are challenges there, but they want to sustain their way of life. Residents want to enhance opportunities for water-related, maritime-related businesses. And they want to maintain what's left for marine-based businesses. And here, one of the big fears that we've heard during the development of this master plan is if we can't somehow find a way, give it an opportunity to eliminate the barriers that may be there on the regulatory side to enhance those opportunities for marine-based businesses. businesses, that they're gonna lose those remaining properties to residential development. And eventually, Tillman is gonna go the way of Bellevue, which is it's gonna be a complete residential community. And here's a photo of, you know, nice homes, but I think that that image captures, and I think the next image too captures, what they're afraid of. And here's a good side-by-side of the Tillman Packing Company. As you can see, where the original packing company or the oyster sheds started out on that island. And once the Tillman Packing Company declined and eventually closed, I believe in the '70s, the market demand was for housing. And so now you see the conversion of what was commercial property, and actually, there was a post office on there, there was retail on there, it was actually its own little mixed-use town. And now you see it as residential development, and I think that that's the fear is what's gonna happen with the rest of Tillman Island. Before we get into the regulations itself, this is just a reminder for those on the commission and those watching, if you're not familiar with what an overlay district is, it basically, it's an overlay zone that overlays the existing underlying zoning districts, either to provide or require additional restrictions. And a historic overlay zone is a good example, where if you have a home and you're in the historic overlay district, if you want to modify, alter, relocate, or build new construction under that overlay zone, you have to comply with certain requirements in terms of design and architecture. So this is an example of an arterial road, a highway, where you have three zoning districts. You have three zoning districts, light industrial, office, and commercial, that are mapped over that arterial highway. But in this case, there is a corridor overlay zone that's placed over it that provides additional performance standards or design requirements for any development that occurs within the area of that overlay zone. Our gateway overlay zone is a good example of that type of overlay zone. But there also is a different type of overlay zone that not only can provide additional performance standards or design requirements, but also provides additional incentives and flexibility, and that's also what this zoning district does. The other really critical thing that people need to understand, this is the base, really the foundation of the zoning district, is how uses are divided up in the zoning district. Uses can be either water-dependent, water-related, or water-enhanced. Uses are not all three or two of those, it can only be one. You can have several uses combined onto one lot or onto one structure that are water-dependent, water-related, or water-enhanced, but a business is gonna be classified under one of those three. A water-dependent use is something that can't even exist unless it has direct access to the water to physically function. It's gonna be on the waterfront. A good example of that are, of course, marinas and water-based aquaculture operations, even some land-based aquaculture operations as well. A water-related use is the use that provides goods and services for water-dependent businesses, but it's not critical that they have direct access to the water. And I often like to point out seafood markets as a good example, or a seafood market as a good example of what is a water-related use. You see seafood markets right on the water, like Place Place in Seattle, or you see seafood markets that are not on the water, but they certainly are within close proximity to it. A water-enhanced use is there is no need to have any direct water access to function, but they get some sort of economic enhancement by being on the water. Good example of that is a restaurant. How many times do people like to go to a restaurant because they want to sit out on the water? And so that's a water-enhanced use. Sometimes it's hard for people to understand, well, how can that be maritime support? It's because it still provides a function for those water-dependent businesses, and it enhances and it provides for that whole marine-dependent, or, sorry, marine-type of environment within the community. This is Main Street in 1905. Here's an example of one of Gary Crawford's graphics that I was able to get. This is 1905, this is Tillman Island Road at Gibson Town Road, for those of you familiar. And that's what it looked like. If you look down the road where it says Cronberg Dry Goods, that's where the current fire department is. Cronberg, by the way, was a Jewish family that immigrated from Ukraine into Baltimore, then moved to Tillman Island. They eventually, Cronberg's Dry Goods, actually, then that family wound up moving to South Carolina, Charleston, I believe, and opened up additional stores there that actually turned out to be major retail stores as time went on into the '50s, '60s, and '70s. And so there's quite a history there. But the most important thing about this photo is that this Main Street was developed at a time that there was actually no zoning district. Our first zoning district was in 1953, and Mary Kay's got a copy of that in her office, and it's actually hanging on the wall, because it's one page. It's a big page, but it's one page. And so oftentimes, when people talk about, I like the character of the village, I wish, I don't want to lose that character. The ironic thing is that character happened at the time, like there was either no zoning, or if there was zoning, it was a very, it was a very limited zoning district, zoning regulations. And when I talk to you about how the apex of the triangle zoning regulations and restrictions are really tied into the attraction of the single-family development, maybe single-family dwelling homeowner, that's because over time, there's more and more restrictions to protect them, and those zoning ordinance, and environmental regulations and other things, and so those zoning ordinances just get bigger and bigger. But that's the main point on that photo there. So what you have is, sorry, what you have are, is a zoning district in Tillman, Village Mixed, which actually impedes the kind of objectives that we're trying to achieve in terms of bringing back water-dependent businesses and water-related businesses in Tillman. This photo shows how that happens. So on the left is your historic, traditional Tillman. On your right is the new Tillman, which has been developed under, actually, that was developed under the Village Center zoning district. So under the Village Center zoning district, you have lot sizes, sorry, that, the one on the right was developed, I think, with the 10,000-square-foot minimum lot size. I think the density at that time was four dwelling units per acre, and I'm not sure what the setbacks are. But those, what you see on the right is the way that Tillman is being developed currently versus the old Tillman on the left. And so what you have are, I believe, Village Mixed bulk requirements that don't meet the traditional Village pattern, and I'm gonna explain that in a, because it's gonna make it hard for redevelopment. Here's a good example of two structures that are, I know the one on the right is historic, the one on the left, I'd have to look and see if it's listed on the inventory. But you see where lot sizes, I'm sorry, the setbacks here are nearly right up on the road, and that really is the historic pattern of development in Tillman. The next slide is a good example of the historic Tillman. Now, this is at a scale of, this is at the same scale, slide, the photo on the left is the same scale as the photo on the right. One is traditional Tillman, that has lot sizes ranging from 8,000 square feet to 20,000 square feet on average. They have lot widths of 50 to 70 feet, and setbacks, as I showed you previously, almost up to the right of way. So it's a little bit different than the Village Mixed zoning district, which requires a minimum lot size with public sewer of 30,000 square feet. I think there are setbacks of 50 feet along Tillman Island Road, where those two structures were that I showed you. There are minimum lot widths of 100 feet, and there are other bulk requirements in there which are different than the traditional pattern of what Tillman is. So it's hard to revitalize development, revitalize the economy in Tillman and encourage redevelopment or adaptive reuse of properties for businesses if everything they have to do is to require variance, because it just can't meet the existing lots that are there that can't meet those bulk requirements. Now luckily, many of the lots that are on Axneros, for example, are at least three-quarters of an acre, or they're over an acre, and so it's a little bit better to them, but for the most part, the lots in Tillman are way under half an acre. One of the things in the district, one of the other things in our current zoning ordinance, which makes it difficult to attract maritime economy, is that you can only do water-dependent facilities in the 100-foot buffer. And our zoning ordinance, as well as the critical area regulations, specify that water-dependent facilities are private peers or community peers, marinas, and water-oriented public recreation, education, and research areas, such as Phillipsport, for example. That's it. That's the only water-dependent facilities identified in our code that can go in the 100-foot buffer. When our consultant looked at other communities along the Mid-Atlantic, which is in their best practices report, they were able to identify a number of other water-dependent facilities. And if you go to the next slide, this zoning district includes those uses in there. You'll see it's a much more expansive list of water-dependent facilities that can go in the 100-foot buffer, including a water-based transportation facility, or marine contracting, or marine fabrication, or marine salvaging service, or a charter or tour bulk facility. And so this zoning district provides more opportunity for more water-dependent facilities to locate along the water. This one I can't say enough of, is an example of an analysis that the consultants did. The one on the left is a lot that meets the standards in terms of lot size and lot width to the VM zoning district on lots with public sewer. And the one on the right is a typical Tillman lot that doesn't meet those bulk requirements. So the one on the left is minimum lot width of 100 feet, it's 30,000 square feet of lot size. The one on the right is a minimum lot width of 50 feet, there's a lot width of 50 feet, and is a lot size of 10,000 square feet. So when you, when you factor in the one on the left, the development constraints on a lot, which includes the 100-foot shoreline development buffer, and this is a hypothetical, and I know that sometimes buffers are modified by council action to less than 100 feet, but let's just say it's 100 feet. You have the minimum side setback requirements of 10 feet, and you have the minimum front setback requirements of 25 feet. Then you factor in your minimum landscape area, which is required in the code at 25%. Then you have your perimeter landscape requirements to protect that from adjoining properties, or protect adjoining properties from that business of a Type A landscape yard. And you've got to meet your parking requirements. In this case, this is a fisheries activities facility, so it's a water-dependent use. That parking requirement is one space for 400 square feet of gross floor area, plus you need some interior parking lot landscaping. The maximum lot coverage, because it's in the critical areas, 15%. That means you can get to 45 square feet of commercial building. However, due to all those constraints, the largest-sized building you can get on that lot is 2,562 square feet. If you look on the right, this example of a typical Tillman lot has the 100-foot buffer, it maintains the 10-foot minimum side setbacks, it reduces the front setback to 15 feet, it reduces the minimum landscape area requirements to 10% with a Type A landscape coronary yard buffer, it reduces the park requirements by half. So now it's one space for 800 square feet of gross floor area, it maintains the interior parking lot landscaping requirements. And even with unlimited lot coverage, which in this case is gonna allow you, based on those site constraints, or, even, sorry, even with the limited lot coverage, the maximum building square footage that you're gonna be able to get due to all those environmental constraints is 1,770 square feet. So clearly, the zoning district that is going to provide incentives to encourage business, maritime business in Tillman and on the waterway is gonna require some sort of relief from bulk standards, as well as incentives, and relief or different alternatives related to critical area requirements. And so that's the kind of, that's the kind of approach that you're seeing in the development of this overlay district. Yeah, the thing I wanted to point about, point out about that too, is we're not talking about big Class A office, big business office parks coming into Tillman, the kind of people that have the capital to do that. We're talking about commercial business owners that don't have that kind of capital, and so for them to be able to do the kind of requirements that are typically, that they typically have to do in development, it just makes it that much more difficult. So the more that we can provide relief or incentives through zoning regulations, the easier it's gonna be for them to be able to get their business off the ground, or to maintain their business and not have that business close. In the zoning district, you'll see for water-dependent, water-related uses, they would not have to comply with the basic commercial design standards that are in the Village Mixed zoning district. And I think that that was a sentiment of the people, of what we heard from the Village Master Planning. You know, you look at these photos, this is Southern Marine, I mean, I look at it and I see, I see a beautiful place, and some people might look at it and they see ugly, and, but this is Tillman, like it or not, it's how Tillman is, and I think people didn't want to be half-prescriptive design standards on how their building's gonna look, if they're gonna focus on marine, or if they're gonna own a marine-dependent business. Next slide. So one of the things that we've had to do with the development of this overlay zoning district is really balance out the objectives of the critical area, which are to protect habitats, as well as improve water quality, with the economic development objective of the master plan, as well as this overlay zoning district. And it's been a challenge, but I have to say that we've been working with the critical area staff, they have been excellent in helping us think through this process and being open to alternative standards, and nothing is in any way set in stone. We hope that we're close, we feel we're close enough certainly to come forward to the planning commission, but there may be additional changes, even after the council accrues, the overlay zoning district is required to go to the critical area commission, and there may be additional changes, just like they're required when we updated the zoning ordinance or replaced the zoning ordinance as part of step 190. The last thing that I wanted to just mention, and I want people to understand, is that there's really limited applicability to, of this overlay district to properties in Talbot County. It can only go into areas that are zoned Village Mixed, or Village Hamlet, or are zoned commercial, LI, GC, and LC, right? And we don't have a lot of that. And they have to have other characteristics. They have to be, you know, they have to, they have to be suitable for the type of businesses that are that are, that are in the land use table in the overlay district. So really, this map shows three areas really in reality where it's going to be applied at least initially. One is in Tillman. The second is in Bellevue, and the third is property that includes the current arena at the foot of the bridge going into Cambridge. This is, the next slide is Bellevue from the Bellevue Master Plan. It's showing three distinct areas of Bellevue. One is historic Bellevue, which is their traditional older homes in Bellevue, although there's some newer homes mixed in. Bellevue land in itself that includes the park as well, and then Tar Creek Working Waterfront, which is the area that potentially this overlay zone could apply. And the next slide is a photo of where the old Turner Packing Company used to be. It has a rich history there of a working waterfront, and that's the remnants of it. Right now, it's being redeveloped into water-dependent use. But that's that view there of the Tar Creek Working Waterfront. And the next slide is from the Tillman Village Master Plan. This is a suggestion for potential areas that the overlay zoning district could apply. Area one being adjacent, the lots adjacent to Napson Arrows. Area two being what is Tillman Island Road, which was the traditional, it is still the traditional main street for Tillman. And then area three, which is the lots that are adjacent to Dalwood Harbor. And, you know, at some point, I mean, the process is going to be that we're going to review the overlay district, the planning commission is going to make a recommendation to the county council, the county council will then make a decision on the overlay district, and then we'll focus on where it'll actually be mapped. But I just wanted you to keep that in mind, because the overlay district, when it's mapped, does prohibit new residential from actually occurring on that property. It eliminates a number of commercial uses that are not compatible with that district. That's very important to understand. And that's it.
Questions, comments? Mr. Strangian?
Chip, please.
Oh, sure. Yep, go ahead, Bill.
Miguel, I thank you for the presentation. I think it's great. Couple points. One, also recall how important Gary Crawford was for, not just this, but some of you may remember, he was against what was called the Village Center Board during the last conference plan. And he was, he was an active member of that and a positive force. The other thing I wanted to recall is, that's relevant to this, I think, too, because you referred to these. He, I don't think he finished his history of Tillman before he died. He gave a presentation at the St. Michael's Library last year, and he died not long thereafter. It was a superb history and fairly short order, and I think it would be very beneficial to the Land Commission if we had access to that. So I'll try to track that down, because it gives a real good background to this effort.
Great, good. Commissioner Strangian?
Again, thank you, Miguel. That was a very insightful and enlightening presentation. I'm also glad that you commented at the end that we need to be cognizant of once these areas are mapped with this overlay district. The things that cannot happen within those districts, we need to take that into consideration when we're actually looking at this mapping. Because as we were talking about earlier today, our charge is not to just look at the next three, five, 10 years, but to consider the potentials for 20, 30, and 50 years down the road. Appreciate your insight and diligence on that.
Commissioner DeJong?
And I want to also say thank you, Miguel, and staff, Marike, and others who were involved. I particularly appreciated the best practices report, the working waterfront zoning best practices report, as well as the working waterfront zoning discovery report. Having gone out with this consultant and identifying six relative or properties, Baltimore and Apple's, East Hampton, Gloucester, Greenport, and Portland, Maine, different states, different towns, different characteristics, but things that we need to consider. And it's, it's nice not to recreate, you know, something that's been done and to learn from what other people have done. And so I think that this was extremely valuable, and I appreciate you including that in our pocket. It also gave me a much better insight into what you're doing with the overlay. And I commend you. I think it's very exciting.
Yes?
Let me wait for that to pass. I just want to say it's very exciting and I can envision what Tillman Island, how it can continue to prosper, and Bellevue can continue to prosper, given the direction we all are going.
Thank you. I appreciate that. One of the telling things when the consultant identified the communities for the best practices report was, it was difficult for him to find a community the size of Tillman. They tended to be bigger, obviously, based on, based on his examples. But one of the, that's one of the things that interests the Department of Natural Resources, Working Waterfronts Program, which gave us the grant to do this, was because there are other villages that want to have the same type of accomplishments that we're trying to achieve in this master plan as well in the state of Maryland. And how can they do that with villages of that size? And so they're hoping that, you know, this is going to be a good tool for those other villages to be able to use and adapt, if it works, to their unique needs as well. So I appreciate that.
Commissioner Stees?
Yes, I just will echo the sentiments of the commission that has spoken already. And just, you know, moving forward, you know, this is a catch-22. The better you do your job, Miguel, the more expensive the lots become, making it harder for marine-based businesses to afford that. So this is a very difficult process moving forward. The better we develop our communities, the more people that want to live there, that's a given. The more people that want to live there makes the property values go up, which makes it hard to run a small base for marine business. So moving forward, having this as a tool to address, at least address some of that and make it kind of a targeted area to limit what can and can't happen there, we'll address some of that. But again, you know, with modern technologies, it's made these far-outlying waterfront communities much more of a viable living spot for someone than it was just a decade ago. So those kind of pressures that are going to be put on all of our communities that you've highlighted, it will be nice to have a tool to, to kind of address that moving forward. Because Talbot County, we are very diverse land usage, so trying to have one broad-stroke planning tool is really not realistic. So it's a good baseline, in my opinion, and it's a good base to build upon, but having a tool to implement for our unique land uses and communities is important. So I think this is a good start. I look forward to giving input to really solidify it as a tool for us as a planning commission moving forward. But again, from a number of projects that I've worked on my time here on the planning commission, I look forward to being part of developing this and moving forward. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Paul. I just wanted to point out, the handouts that you have include a comparison, and this is for those that are online as well, because I'll be posting these on our next step 190 website after the meeting. There's a comparison of the current bulk standards under the Village McSoney District with those changes in the overlay to address some of the challenges that I described to you in the presentation regarding the different lot configurations in Tillman. There's also a sheet that describes some of the performance standards under the overlay zone that property owners will, commercial businesses will have to comply with as part of their plans. And then last, and perhaps for some the most confusing, is the area, the two areas that the critical area commission is most interested in, which is the water revitalization areas and the adaptive reuse areas. The water revitalization areas are areas that when sub-district one or two has a map on a property or properties, they're automatically deemed water revitalization areas. And that is something that the state critical area regulations allow. However, there's no guidance on what that means. So this is our attempt with the critical area commission staff to actually help define what that means. The only, actually, I take that back. City of Baltimore has water revitalization area, but it's just so out of context that it's not actually applicable or helpful either for us. But one of the things you should know, and this is in addition to the overlay zoning district that you have and have to consider, is that the critical area commission wants to know on a small lot, they understand it's hard to do buffer mitigation. So if you do development in the buffer or outside of that fact in the critical area, you have to mitigate that by plantings. And if you can't plant on-site for mitigation, then you have to plant off-site in the critical area in the watershed, I can't remember the criteria. If you can't do that, then you have to pay a fee in lieu. But they want to know that, then what, if they're giving something back in return, such as reduced, reduced buffer setbacks, for example, or you can do some water-related or water-enhanced uses in the buffer, which currently you cannot do, how do we know we're still achieving water quality and habitat protection in that, in that critical area? One of the things that we're now taking a look at is actually using some of those fee and lieu funds to actually develop a design plan for shore improvement, both structural and non-structural. So bulkheads and also living shorelines that will help address some of the shore erosion that's happening along Napson Arrows, along Harris Creek, along Tar Creek, along the Chesapeake Bay, that are being impacted from shore erosion due to high tides, sea level rise, and storm events. And doing a demonstration project on Tillman, and then if it succeeds, to be able to then develop an entire coastal resiliency infrastructure project that can be slowly implemented to protect those lands from further erosion, because if we lose those lands, then we've lost all our marine dependent businesses. So if we do that, then the fee and lieu, the fee and lieu money that we collect can actually then be applied towards that demonstration project and towards those infrastructure projects in the future for the benefit of those commercial property owners. So we are looking into that. So I just want to look into that.
So Miguel, just for fun, those fee and lieu, what would they typically run on some of these lots?
They're, they're not, we don't give it a time, that's for sure.
And you can ballpark it. I mean, is it 5,000, 10,000, 100,000?
It really depends where it is, whether it's in the 100-foot buffer or not. It can run from, if it's not in the buffer, 31 cents per square foot to a dollar or something per square foot. I mean, certainly not.
Okay. So a half-acre lot that was completely in the buffer could be up to $20,000. Okay. So my, my thoughts are, when we look at Tillman and the master plan, if Tillman is going to survive as a working village, then this is essential. We don't want these waterfronts to be squeezed out by residential. So I think we're on the right track there. But when you look at the businesses that are in Tillman, I think it's going to be important that we do whatever we can to help them succeed economically. So obviously, we hopefully have some control over some of those, but it looks to me like the ball is in the critical areas court, as far as each reuse setback, so forth and so on. So I think, my opinion is, we're talking about a relatively small amount of waterfront when we look at the whole county acre-wise. And somebody somewhere has to be willing to say, okay, this is a good idea. We can, you know, protect the shoreline to the best we can, but we understand what you're trying to do, and that's better for the community. And in a sense, that will, you know, relate back to better ones. So, and I know there's a balance there and all that, but, but when I look at a very small business in Tillman that may want to locate on Napson Arrows, and I think $20,000 could be the straw that breaks his back, that he says, I can't do that. You know, so again, I think it's a small amount of money in the big picture, but it's a large amount of money to what we hope would, you know, transpire into Tillman. So I think, just as trapped as setting the future for the next 50 years, I think this project would, can, and will redefine Tillman moving forward for a long, long time. So I think it's important that we do what we can to move it forward, to help the critical area realize how important this is if we want to keep Tillman as a working town and not a either bedroom or retirement community, which, you know, we welcome that, it works good, but there's got to be a balance. So I think that's our challenge. My hope is, from the county side, when we talk about some of the requirements, again, that we can, that we can work with to make it, make it work as far as some flexibility and some of the standards in regard to landscape, parking, lot coverage, some of those things. In other words, if we do everything in the big picture, it's really minor. Now, I realize we have to do what we can, and I'm not saying that we don't, but it's really, really important to me that this thing works. So, you know, when I look at Napson Arrows and some of those old sites that were either packing houses or, you know, where they used to do shipbuilding and where they used to do the creosote program. In other words, to go in there with a planting plan, it looks to me like you'd have to put in three feet of good topsoil, and then you've still got shell and oil and creosote underneath just because of what happened there. So some of those things, you know, the rubber's got to meet the road, and common sense has to take over, and that type of thing. But I think this is exciting. So my next question. In a perfect world, what's your timeframe to, for this to become a county?
We're certainly ready for the commission to make a decision on the recommendation to the county council. And, and so between now and the next commission meeting, I will be talking some more with the commission staff just to see if there are some final changes that we may need to make to the draft, which I will bring to the next meeting if that's the case. But certainly, between now and your next meeting, you have the time to digest this even more, and of course, talk to us if you have questions. And if you want to make or discuss some changes to the draft, you can do that at the next meeting. At the next meeting, if you feel that you're at the, you're at the right point to make a recommendation, you can certainly do that.
Do you feel like?
Chip?
Yeah, sure. Go ahead, Bill.
I agree with you with regard to the, to the view, and I think there was success of the, of the master plan discussions, that, that we didn't want to totally get on a GL3 card, but the critical was limiting, and Miguel, I can counter on that, but it was limiting our ability to do that, to really bend the rules so that this special place can be economically viable. My view from afar is that Miguel and the staff have been working diligently with critical areas, and our experience with critical areas is they changed laterally, if at all, and the fact that they're, they're... at all, and the fact that they're, my sense this would have been done 500 years ago were it not for the critical areas. So I encourage, I'm glad that we're still working with this, but yeah, critical areas is the issue here, and I feel exactly the same way. It's time that Chip has a little more flexibility here.
They, they-
Also, just a quick suggestion that, Miguel, I'm not sure that the normal procedure would be to finish up making a recommendation to the county council, but I think that it wouldn't be at all appropriate to send this fund, or to stop to Chuck Callahan, who was involved in, he was the county council representative for the master plan. So I think he would be very interested in the progress of this and the documents that you have, including the, which I liked a lot along the basis, that the consultant's documents are about the working waterfront program elsewhere.
Okay. Yeah, we'll do that, actually. And he was, yeah, he was our point person on the master planning process. You are correct on that. And I just, maybe to come back full circle, when I talked about in the beginning, land use regulations and their purpose, and sometimes you have other laudable goals in terms of environmental goals and growth management goals that come into conflict with the economic development purposes of zoning regulations and land use regulations. That, this is a good example of that. There's no question that critical area requirements in significant parts of Talbot County and other areas of the state of Maryland are there to do a good thing, which is to protect habitat and to improve water quality in the bay, which ultimately helps also with improving the maritime industry. But there are instances like this, in very specific targeted areas, that sometimes those conflicts are a little bit more highlighted, and I can't say enough about critical area commission staff and how open they have been with us to just discuss all this, to get to the point even that we are today. So it's been good that way. And the other thing I wanted to mention was, at some point, we do want to come back to the critical area commission with the request to reclassify portions or all of Tillman from limited development area to intensely developed area. And if we do that, that'll also reduce another barrier for businesses, because it eliminates the 50% or 25% lot coverage requirement, maximum lot coverage requirement, and gives them more flexibility in terms of being able to put parking where they want to put it, and to have more impervious surface on the lot.
Commissioner Speas?
I just want to reiterate Chip's point that, you know, moving forward with this, because in my mind, just to put on the record, like, this is not, once we pass this, it's set in stone, never to be changed, never to ever touch again. Everything has to follow these guidelines from this point forward. But what I do see it as, and why it is important, is because it gives us a step and a tool that's much more manageable than what we currently have to deal with for these areas. So again, you know, do I think that it's perfect, or do I know if it's going to work 100% the way that I see it being able to work? Probably not, because, just probably not. So, but it is, what I do see, is a tool that is much more maneuverable and manageable to get a desired outcome than what we currently are working with. So again, I reiterate what Chip says, we can move this forward and get it into regulation, the sooner the better, because again, it's a tool that we will be able to manage, that's much more maneuverable than what we currently have. Not saying everything in it is perfect, but it's manageable. So whatever we can do, I agree.
One other thing I may-
Yep. Sure.
Much along those same lines, it does give us flexibility moving forward, in a long term, back to what Chairman Council said about the importance of these businesses, is that we don't know what the future will bring with any of it. What we do know, that if we make it impossible for these businesses to be successful, to succeed moving forward, they will be gone, and once they are gone, and that property is redeveloped into something else, the chances of any of those, any of those type of businesses ever come back to that area are essentially nil.
Miguel, would we have some sense of the critical areas staff's position on this before our next meeting?
I think so.
Good. Good. That's encouraging. So we're talking about maybe months instead of years?
Yeah. And just, I always remind people, remember, it's the staff, so it isn't the commission.
Right.
So they could agree with certain things, doesn't mean the commission will, and you've certainly been through that process before as well.
Sure. Sure. Okay. Yeah, and my hope would be that there's either some, if we had to do something, there's either some county property or state property with some kind of economic development grant that would help these businesses to work towards something, if it comes down to a fee and move on or something. In other words, this is a big fish. We need to, we need to keep it moving. Good. Yep. Okay. Anything further on that? We'll move on next, and work sessions? Okay. Commission members. So we agreed earlier to come back possibly next Thursday. Is that practical from a staffing standpoint, or, in other words, my concern was when I said a week, that this is going to come before the county council, before our July meeting. In other words, that it would be on that agenda. I know it's not on next week's, but practically and realistically, you know, at this point, what works best for staff?
If we have it on Thursday, that's fine, and I'm not sure we can't have it here.
Oh.
So we'll have to check, because this room is apparently occupied. Is it all day? Could we maybe do an afternoon, or maybe late afternoon? So we'll have to check on the timing, the location, but certainly by the end of next week.
Okay.
The county council meets every other Tuesday, so if it's not on their agenda on the night, then it would be potentially on two weeks later. So we still have a little flexibility to break the beam.
I wasn't trying to, in other words, I was trying to make sure that we get it in before, get done before they have it on their agenda. So, I think so.
And you mentioned next Wednesday would be bad. All day, like, could we maybe even have it in the afternoon?
Our technical advisory committees are all day. We meet with staff in the morning, and then have advocates come in in the afternoon, or call in there.
Okay.
And I think it would be better if we did it in person, as opposed to conference calls or something like that. It's just-
We could potentially, I mean, I believe that it's just going to be a conversation with the planning commission, there's room and testimony and everything, so maybe one staffer could come here, and one could do the technical advisory committee on Wednesday morning. So we'll work and see if this room is available on Wednesday morning, or look at some other alternatives, and make sure that we set something up.
Okay. Good. Well, make it work realistically for you, and then we'll work back with you in there. Okay.
Is there any particular day that just won't work in the next two weeks for our review? For a few minutes in the morning?
I wouldn't anticipate taking a great amount of time. In other words, I think we'll look through the information, and everybody's mind will be made up by then. Obviously, when we make a motion, we have discussion in case there is something hanging out there. I don't want to circumvent the process. Yeah. Okay. Anything else for the good of the order? Here, nothing. Nothing. We will adjourn the meeting shortly after 12 o'clock. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you.